Go ahead and start if that's your preference.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. And so the first order business is actually a special meeting and I did want to remind everybody that is participating. One, thank you guys for participating here um be in the virtual online meeting. And two, I wanted to just remind you that this is actually live streaming. So um in theory, if it was public, they're able to participate and certainly welcome them to view the proceedings of this special meeting. Um we will, after we take up the one point of business special meeting agenda, um adjourn to a workshop to talk through the GJ Speaks.org information that was provided as well. So with that, um we will jump into the first order business on the regular agenda for the special meeting, um which is discussion on a draft resolution to adopt emergency policy regarding telephone electronic participation in Grand Junction Planning Commission meetings. Um you hopefully have in front of you and have the opportunity to review um the draft resolution, um which in effect um provides an opportunity to actually conduct a meeting like we are conducting today, um which is a hundred percent virtual meeting. Um and this would be um for not just your uh regular meetings, but also for your workshops as well. Um as currently drafted, um it doesn't require presence of um uh any members of the Planning Commission to be um here in person. Certainly is a point in topic of discussion um for the Planning Commission today. It does cite um means in which the public can participate, um which one of those means we will talk through obviously through the workshop, which is a new website called GJ Speaks.org, um as well as being able to call in and continue to provide written comments um on uh public items or uh public hearing items that uh take public comment, um as well as any other on items that the Planning Commission desires for the public to be able to speak on behalf of. Um so wanted to pause there um and see, one, if there are any questions from the Planning Commission regarding the proposed resolution or any other discussion that I can assist with at this point.
Tamara, I have a question. On the um original draft of this uh resolution that was on GJ Speaks, it had paragraph five highlighted as um we were still deciding if we were going to have in-person participation um or not. Is that, is that still a question to be discussed in here? Or um did we come to a conclusion from our conversations?
Yeah, um so I think it's a point of discussion for the Planning Commission today. Um the City Council did us a resolution, emergency ordinance. Um they are currently requiring through their emergency provisions that there are three members of City Council actually present here um in the auditorium. Um however, they also are no longer, as of Monday, allowing the public to physically attend. Um the the guidance that we received is it's really up to you as a planning commissioner to determine whether there is a desire to have anyone here physically present um in the auditorium um as you conduct your business, or if you are um sufficient with a hundred percent virtual attendance. So I will leave that to you guys. That is a point of discussion that to be um analyzed here in the resolution.
And so just for everybody's um information, and you may have said this and I missed it, but council um required to have three people in person for public hearings. Is that correct?
That is accurate, yes.
And I had suggested to Tamara um that I felt that we could host our meetings completely virtually, and I didn't see a need for um three of us to um go to the public hearing in person. But if any of you feel strongly one way or another about that, please, please say so.
Yeah, this is Ken. Um I strongly agree with Christian on that. I see no necessity or advantage or benefit to showing up in person. And there is a small but real risk imposed. So I would say we uh should be allowed to conduct those uh or preferentially conduct those completely uh remotely.
Yeah, I agree.
As long as we have a quorum of four, I don't, I don't object to it either.
Okay. Well, I'm seeing uh everybody's head nodding from those who didn't verbally, Keith, uh those who didn't verbally uh confirm. So it sounds like we have consensus that we don't need to have people physically present in the public hearing auditorium and that we can do it virtually.
Excellent. Um I will make that uh modification in this resolution. And I think that was my only other clear decision point in the resolution. Um available for any questions, otherwise I think Chair, you can entertain a motion on the resolution.
Sure. Any other, any further discussion on that resolution before we go to a vote?
I thought the resolution was very well done. Good job.
Thank you. That goes to John and Jamie for sure on the work on putting this together. Appreciate their efforts on that. Um and did want to maybe just as a point of clar- care uh clarification to what Stan said, certainly to conduct any business, we will continue to need a forum present virtually to do so.
Which for the record is for more planning commissioners.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Okay, so um as it says in the uh resolution, I believe, we are going to do a roll call vote. Um so if you were in favor of adopting this resolution, please signify by saying aye. If you are not, please say no. I will call your name. Um I will go on my screen left to right. So Sam?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Uh Ken?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
And I'm also an aye, so that passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. At this point in time, that actually concludes our business for our regular agenda. Um I did have one item that I wanted to just alert planning commissioners about. Um uh Christian and myself were informed yesterday that um Planning Commissioner Kathy Duffy um has resigned from the Planning Commission. She has actually relocated outside of City Leominson to Mesa County, and so no longer qualifies to be a member of the Planning Commission under our bylaws. And so her resignation is effective immediately as she is currently um taking residence at her new location. So wanted to let you guys know um that that resignation has been received. She uh currently doesn't actually have the internet set up at her new place of residence, but you expect a formal resignation letter um to come in and will be distributed to you all for um your review.
So with that information, I would just encourage everybody to please make sure that you're able to attend the Planning Commission public hearing on Tuesday and any subsequent meetings. Um we know that um Steve's health hasn't permitted him to be terribly active. So uh that drops us down to um by two essentially. So being able to have that quorum is going to be even more important.
Thank you. Um Chairman Reese, that's all the information I have for the special meeting. Um if you want to adjourn, we can move into the workshop portion.
Yep. Do we have any other items before the Planning Commission, before we adjourn? No? Seeing lots of heads shake. Okay, uh this special meeting is adjourned and we will go into our workshop.
Excellent. Well, thank you guys um for that. Um so in the light of the coronavirus and COVID, um as well as really an ongoing discussion um here at the staff level and certainly from my perspective over the years is we've been really looking for a tool that enables um more, I think, robust engagement in our um public hearing process. Um but now even more so are looking for a tool that allows the um residents and citizens of this community to participate in a more meaningful way through remote or virtual engagement in um the commission hearing items or other items. So really wanted to spend the workshop with you today to actually walk through what we call the GJ Speaks platform. Um it is all online. It's actually been developed, actually, for Tamara and I, um web developers, um really with the intent that it engages and broadens the ability for people to participate in public hearings. Um and so hopefully you guys had a chance to read through the workshop material that I provided, but hopefully cause you're really good overview of really the intent and some of the success that's been seen with this platform. Um and we'll really want to turn it over to Bella at this point in time to walk us through the uh GJ Speaks website um and um familiarize yourself with it as a tool and then let you know um one, what the public sees, but then also what your engagement as planning commissioners would be on the site. So that. Bella?
Yeah, so I'm here. Um you can't see me, but I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you guys. Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the GJ Speaks.org site. Um this is what the public sees when they uh enter in that web address, and this is what you guys will see. Um the really, the big difference for you guys is going to be logging in. Um I'll distribute your login information. Um so you can view uh public comments and agendas as um your planning commissioner role. So yeah, like Tamara said, uh GJ Speaks is a platform that really mimics the public hearing process by allowing the public to review the staff reports and present- presentations online. Um but then it also allows them to enter public comment into the record um prior that hearing date. So um while this doesn't replace the public hearing, it really um is a great tool in addition to, to allow more uh public participation. Um the site is going to be going live uh tomorrow, so really, yeah, we'll hopefully get some use for it for the meeting on Tuesday. So um I guess what kind of questions do you guys have? Have you guys had a chance to review the site and the uh user guide at all?
No.
No?
Bella, why don't you, um if you would, click on like the Augustine Blue rezone and just show them what they what will see and how the public gets to engage in the actual information available.
Sure. So yeah, like I said, this is what the public sees, but then also what you'll see. So these are each of the items for uh next Tuesday's agenda. And um consent agenda, um items listed on top. And then here are the items for regular hearing. Um it has the case number, name, um some uh the case summary. Um and then it really, this piece is nice with the staff presentation. So uh you can, you have the option to view the staff presentation ahead of time, but it also gives members the option to see the staff presentation. Um if there is um an applicant presentation, it'll show right next to this. And then here's the files associated. So these are the same files that you'll see in the agenda packet, but here listed nicely for members of the public to review. And so you can kind of just click through each of those. And then down here, we list the decision-making criteria. So before um a member of the public can leave a comment, they can review that criteria and really know what you all as decision-makers are making your uh decision based on. So they have an opportunity to review that. Um and then here, they can leave a public comment. Um they have until 4:00 PM the day before the public meeting to do so. And then they also have the opportunity to ask city staff questions um by, just via email um in this form. Um if there was applicant information plugged into this uh action item here, they would also have the opportunity to or to ask um the applicant a question.
So Bella, where would we see, where would we um as planning commissioners be able to review those public comments? Would it just be down below? Would they all be listed out?
Sure. So yeah, they would just be listed out. Um I can show you.
So I could leave a test comment if we wanted to.
I can show you a screen capture of what that would look like. So it would look something like this with the um unread comments in gray and then the red comments in white. It would look a little like that. Um when you log in as a commissioner, so I'll go ahead and log in as Bill here. It'll take you to the screen that um for the next uh agenda. And it'll tell you if you have any unread comments, um the total number of comments, and if there were any staff responses. And then you could just hit view here or review all. And then view would take you directly to the action item that you would have, you would have unread comments on. It's pretty intuitive there. If you wanted to get back to that main screen, you just either go back to GJ Speaks.org or click on that. And then that list, um all the upcoming meetings here in reverse chronological order. I haven't figured that piece out yet. But um as you can see here, we have the workshop um agenda, special meeting agenda, and then the regular meeting agenda for Tuesday listed. So really an all-encompassing view of um the meetings that you have.
Bella, can you um, can you show us the, I saw an area that had a draft ordinance. Is it pretty much what you had been giving us?
Right. So the um really, all the documents here are going to be the same documents that you receive in your pocket.
So if I may and chime in there, so as a planning commissioner, you can receive the exact same documentation either through that link that we historically sent you, which is to that agenda's a minute, or you can look at it here. It's the exact same documentation. So either one will get you um all of the same information. So you can use whichever platform you find most convenient to.
Tamara, how does the public dial end of the Tuesday night meeting?
Yeah, so we've got a couple of pieces of functionality for um Tuesday night's meeting. Um they uh actually, so we will be sending out after this meeting today um public notice cards that provide actually this GJ Speaks um website. And on the website again, they can go on uh review the presentation, all the application material, and then the comments. So that's one way for them to participate. They don't have to be present, obviously, to, or they don't have to. They can do that anytime between essentially uh tomorrow morning is common, and that is considered um part of the public hearing process. Um they also um participate through the traditional means, which is sending in written comments. Um we also have a line set up, a phone line, a traditional phone line. So someone isn't comfortable um kind of using this technology, they can actually call in and leave a recorded um message with their statement um that we will play back to you all should we receive any comments on a specific item. Um and then lastly, they can watch um the proceedings. They can watch them in two ways. They can watch them through kind of our historic livestream interface, or they can log out here through GJ Speaks and watch a livestream of this discussion that we're having. And will be happening on Tuesday night. So there's lots of options for them except for the physical uh in-person option.
So Tamara, if somebody does submit a question through the phone line or a written comment, will that be recorded in to GJ Speaks by staff so that we have all comments in one centralized location?
Um so the um actual recording, if it comes in on the phone line, um it will be played back during the hearing proceedings on Tuesday nights. Um so we wouldn't distribute those in advance. I believe we've actually said we can keep those open till 4:00 PM. So we may be collecting them all the way to 4:00 PM um on Tuesday, and then they would literally would collect them, download them, um play them back to you as testimony on that hearing item.
Hey Tamara, I have a question regarding uh this. So um is the meeting recorded? I mean, it's online with the TV, right?
Yeah, so it's recorded. Um it's actually recorded through this GJ Speaks, which is used YouTube. So um it's being recorded. In fact, you may see on your screen, it actually says live on YouTube and it's recording up in the upper left-hand corner of our screen. You guys might have similar um information. And then it also will be continued to be broadcasted um and available through um our traditional website uh agenda documentation. So whether people want to tune in for the live hearing or uh just look back for posterity, say there ones available.
And will, will city staff manage the audio comments and, and that sort of thing?
They will, yep. I'm trying to understand if we're not allowing comments, or if we are allowing comments from the public during the meeting. So if comments, if written comments come in through GJ Speaks, um so this is one modification um to this platform kind of for what I call the COVID adaptation, um that we will actually keep this platform open until um you as chair closes the public comment portion of the hearing. And should we receive any written comments during the course of the proceedings, we will read those into the record as well. Um so we will have on our um desktop open um GJ Speaks. And should any comments come in, we will read those into the record um for your education and consideration.
So when we deliberate, um we, we will have all the staff there available. Um Jamie, you're, you're going to be available to us online. Is that, if we have legal?
I sus- I'm, excuse me. I suspect you're going to see me just like you're seeing me right now. As long as Tam is willing to set it up and use this room, I prefer to be here than when you guys observe my home. So this is what I expect to get.
So any, any other questions on the logistics? This is a really high-level overview and encourage you to actually read through the handbook. And already, I think it gives you a um pretty good in-depth um opportunity to see how the site is used. And then it also has a series of frequently asked questions as well. I know some of you have already perused it just from um inquiries in this conversation and, and prior. Um but we, we think it's actually a really exciting tool, um certainly during the age of COVID. But um for after, um this has run its course in keeping um a more broader uh opportunity for community engagement, I think, is um well-grounded. And I think that lots of communities are either working to implement or eyeing this because of its versatility and the response uh other communities have seen just to broaden the engagement um and hopefully get a more representative um sector that actually is participating in the hearing comment portion, for the public comment portion.
Tamara, thank you for your leadership in seeking out this platform. I know you had your eye on it for a little while, and uh I've gotten a chance to play around in it, and it seems pretty intuitive. And I think it's a, it's a neat way to be able to view the information, both from a planning commission perspective, but also from a public perspective, to look at this information in advance and be a little more prepared in advance for our public hearings.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. Um you certainly want to make a huge call out to Bella, who's been instrumental in getting this um up and launched and understanding all the technical requirements in a really short order. So um you know, I think the goal here is a lot of different inputs coming in, certainly addressing the public health issues of COVID. Broadening uh civic engagement in our processes is certainly at play. Um and then I think just again, making a platform that responds, I think, to some of the demands of today's world and being able to um actively participate in a format that doesn't require someone to be physically present at six o'clock on a Tuesday night. Um so we're really frankly quite excited about it. Uh I think you see this as a huge opportunity during the uh pandemic, but um also to really broaden long-term engagement in the work that you all do. And um I think you continue to value the public comment. This just provides one more, I think, opportunity and avenue for people to participate.
So Tamara, this is Ken. So I, I'm grasping what's uh, you know, what's going on here for like preparing for the meeting and seeing what's coming. A little fuzzier what's going to happen uh live. Like, how is the usual dialogue we're accustomed to of having the applicant make a presentation and then public comments and so forth? How is that going to play out on this live platform?
Yeah, so um thanks for that segue, Ken. Um so the um, the proceedings of the public hearing really work the exact same way as they traditionally will. And let me maybe talk about um maybe the non-COVID portion and then maybe the CO- COVID adaption, if you will. Um and so this platform, at the time of COVID, is set up to really augment, as I think Bella said, or mimic the public hearing setting. So um it, this would um in normal days be running um prior to that physical public hearing. Um and then we would collect the information that's come in through this platform. Um and that would again kind of augment the traditional public hearing. Outside of COVID, we would continue to have a normal public hearing proceeding as we have been for the last 17 years. That said, now that we're looking at the kind of COVID constraints, um we anticipate this in a similar fashion, although slightly different. At this point in time, we're not anticipating that, for instance, or for example, staff does an additional public presentation because it is already available. Similarly, we're not anticipating that the applicant will do an additional public um presentation um through this virtual meeting setting. Um that said, both staff and the um applicant are available and can make um additional public presentations should there be information or questions that arise from this GJ Speaks that we think needs to be addressed in a presentation format. Similarly, the applicant will be online through this Zoom interface, um as well as staff, as well as legal for any questions that come up through uh Planning Commission or through the deliberation process. So um in the same sense, it kind of mimics what we do now just in the virtual setting.
So um that's good. Um that since you record the staff reports, they're recorded, but you have the staff, um the planners there for questions, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're trying to kind of be respectful of our own kind of distancing as well. So it's likely, and we don't have all the finalized logistics, but it's likely that Jamie and I will be in this room um participating. Our staff planner will be at their desk, actually, so they will be virtually participating. And then the applicant will be available through their office or their home to also answer any questions that come up through um the proceedings.
Thank you.
So will you, um Tamara or Bella, send us out a link to the webinar for the public hearing? Or will it be the same one that you've sent us?
Yep. So we will be sending you a new Zoom link um to access the proceedings for Tuesday night.
And then, um so once we start the meeting, we'll proceed as usual. We just, you know- We just, you know, we'll skip kind of the portion where we have the staff and applicant do the presentation and jump right into questions and discussion before we go into public comment. Is that correct?
That is accurate. Now, the caveat is if you want staff to do that presentation, we certainly can. But are we anticipating it being exactly the same that's on the online format right?
Yeah, I would comment on that. My concern would be like if it's a particularly busy agenda and we're reviewing multiple applications or it becomes pretty lengthy and people get a little tired without having some kind of a staff presentation to kind of reorient us to the specifics of that application. I think that could be a little compromising. And maybe that doesn't have to be the entire presentation, maybe a abbreviated version or, you know, just to kind of start the discussion.
We certainly can accommodate. We really look to your direction, Planning Commission, on what you would prefer for that. We can provide a presentation if that's a question.
Maybe, maybe instead, just like a one or two-minute overview of this is the XYZ rezone. You know, they're rezoning from this to this. We, you know, whatever, you know, just kind of a quick, short summary.
I'm happy to do that. It sounds like maybe that would be helpful to refresh. Certainly, like I said, we'll have staff available. So should you want a full presentation, we can certainly produce that as well.
Christian, I have a question for you. If we as a planning commission, if we're deliberating, we need to leave the screen. Do you want us to propose a recess or you want us just to leave, come back?
Like if you need to take a personal break?
Yeah.
So what I would suggest is at the bottom of your screen right now, there's a little icon and underneath it says chat.
Yeah.
So you can send me a direct message. You would just click on my name and just shoot me a note.
Perfect.
And just say, can we recess before the next public hearing item? Just like we do in person. And then, you know, if you don't want everybody to see you, you know, getting up and walking away for a moment because you have on pajamas or something like that, you can just stop your video for that portion and then turn your video back on when we're ready to resume.
Perfect. Got it. That sounds great. Thank you.
So as we look at the GJ Speaks site, as you said, it's actually live now, but we will be sending out information on the cards to potential, well, to neighbors within 500 feet. We've already sent out notice. This will be an augmentation or additional information on the GJ Speaks website. So hopefully any of those that anticipate or interested in participating on Tuesday will find this platform easy to use as well. That said, what we have queued up for Tuesday are, we believe, are non-controversial issues. So we weren't expecting large attendance regardless. So just a quick preview and you can see hopefully on the screen here. So what we have for the agenda on Tuesday, we've got three items on the consent. One of those is the approval and consideration of the last meeting minutes. We have a request to vacate a portion of road of 27 and 1/2 road. And then we have a request to extend for a period of two years preliminary plan and final filing to plat for the Pinnacle Bridge subdivision. So those are all slated for your consent agenda at this point in time. And then on the regular agenda, we have a request to rezone Augustine Blue request. This is actually at the corner of 26th Road and G properties at that location. We have a property or an application that the city has submitted for an amendment to the planned development and an ODP for the Riverfront at Dos Rios. This is including some additional properties in that project and then assigning them uses in that ODP. We've got another request for a right-of-way vacation as a part of a preliminary discussion for a project called the Goose Down. We have two zoning amendments, both of which you guys have seen through workshops. One is force, really three revisions and modifications of the planned development text amendment and then to the B1 setbacks. So that is the slate of agenda items. Again, there's legislative issues at the bottom. There's two workshops, so you should be familiar with the scope of those requests. Let me pause there and see if there's any questions and then talk a little bit more about logistics and getting you guys up and running actually on GJ Speaks.
Tamara, I have a question. It's George. So do we still have, we still have the prerogative of, there's not any comments. We still have the prerogative of moving an item from the hearing to consent agenda?
Um.
Or would you rather that we not do that?
So that's a good question. We certainly can move items on consent. And are, we were actually planning on posting the agenda on Civic Clerk or on our normal website at the end of this conversation. So should there be an item you're interested in moving to consent, I think we can accommodate that.
How soon would, I mean, how soon will we need to let you know if we wanted to move something?
Preferably now. So I mean, technically, we can move that agenda up to 24 hours in advance of Tuesday's hearing. So yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with the way it is. I'm just asking for future reference. I don't have any big concerns now, but I, you know, I just wanted to find out what, what.
Yeah, no problem.
And Tamara, how, I know we're sending out postcards to people within the radius of each of these projects being considered for Tuesday night, but are we also putting something big on the landing page of the city website to let people know they can participate in this way as well?
And we haven't modified the landing page of our city website, but we certainly can add that in. That's a great suggestion.
I'm just, I'm a little concerned that people may not receive the information that we're hosting the meeting in this format broadly, so.
Yeah, so we actually, on the mail notice that went out last week, again, this, everything has evolved so quickly, as I'm sure you guys can appreciate. But we actually did on the notice that went out to them, that met all of our notice requirements last week, did let them know that there would be a virtual option for participation and to check the agenda. And we did provide a direct link on the mail notice on the agendas.
Okay.
The agenda. So this really is just, it's not a required notice. We thought it would actually just be a nice way of letting people know and directing them to the GJ Speaks very directly versus having them get there circuitously. So again, kind of complimentary, but hoping it will steer people very easily to the GJ site. They will get there regardless if they use the existing information we provided them last week.
Okay. And then I was also going to suggest, and I don't know if, if the person running the meeting has to do this or not, but to our planning commissioners who haven't used Zoom before, when you pop out, when you click on participants, there's a little pop-out on the side of the screen of who's participating in the meeting. And then there's a little button that says raise hand. And I would, I don't know if I'll be able to see that of who's raising their, oh, I can. So I can, like, if you have something that you want to add to the conversation to try to avoid us talking over the top of one another, we can try to use that feature if you guys find that easy to use.
I'm waving to you.
Oh, I see you, George.
That's a great suggestion. You know, the Zoom platform does search and kind of find the people that are speaking. But certainly that's an easier way to, for the chair specifically, to moderate the discussion.
That's a good idea.
And then also, everybody should mute their, their little speakers or audio when they're not talking so we don't hear any background since they are being recorded publicly.
Oh yeah, that's a good idea.
So if there are any other questions, what you can expect from us is information and direct contact from Bella on receiving your login information to GJ Speaks. And as she said, you will get prompted on your entry screen into GJ Speaks whether there are any comments that have been received. And certainly, you need to review those comments. You will receive automated prompts the day before the hearing should you have not received or not reviewed any comments that we do receive. So do you know that you will get that prompt, but encourage you to also keep that in mind as you prepare for Tuesday night's hearing. If you've got questions, let us know. I know this is probably a lot thrown at you at the same time. It's not just kind of figuring out Zoom, but also this other platform. But we do think it's fairly intuitive and really think for our public's sake that this will hopefully be a good opportunity to be able to participate similar fashion to previous opportunities. So I think that's all I've got unless there's any other questions from Planning Commissioner.
I just want to highlight one thing here. So I just want to highlight the importance of logging in because if you're logged out and you're just reviewing, it'll be all the same information. But if you're just looking at it as a member of the public and you're, you can read the comments still, but it wouldn't show up like here on Lakewood's site. We can see five out of the 11 council members have viewed this comment. And I think just as reassurance to the public, the member of the public that left the comment, just seeing that number complete before the hearing would be probably reassuring and beneficial. So yeah, just making sure that you're logged in and I'll be sending out that, those credentials to you guys later this afternoon.
So Bella, what I heard you just say is whenever you review this, make sure you log in.
Exactly.
And then, and then that will show that we've all seen it.
Exactly. So just really important to make sure that you're logged in when you're using the site.
Got it. Thank you.
And Bella, can you tell me, I don't know that, if I've seen this before, when we're recording, does the chat, does the content of the chat record also?
I am not super familiar with Zoom, but I don't think so.
Well, let's try it. So we will test this out and then we can go back and see if it's on there.
So here, okay. So yeah, you can see the chat here. So yeah, we can review that recording in the live stream and see if that window pops up.
I was just going to suggest that if, if we needed to communicate as planning commissioners, like, hey, Christian, I need a break or, you know, whatever that looks like, we could use the chat, but I'm not sure everybody wants that to be recorded and published live that, you know, hey, I need to go to the bathroom, right? So I was just curious if that, when we're, when we're live streaming and when this is recorded for public, if that chat's going to be.
Well, we could say recess.
We could say recess.
We could say, we don't have to get specifics.
Right.
I would leave that to you, Christian, as a chair. Certainly if you use functions, be aware, limit that to the logistics of your personal needs versus any content-based conversation. The other one is, is that, you know, as you do frequently during our normal hearings, I think you kind of look around and say, you know, where are we at? Do we need a break here? And, you know, having that recorded is, continues to be part of the transparency that may be important as we continue. So I'll leave that to you to figure out how to.
Sure.
You obviously in the real meetings do a good job of that and kind of jumping in and making sure people don't need a five-minute personal break.
But I think that's good that you brought that up, Christian, because we don't want to be idle comments on the chat.
And we certainly don't want to be discussing anything substantive on the chat, right? You know, anything substantive or related to the topics that we're discussing need to be discussed verbally for all of the members of the public to hear.
So we will use our chat discreetly.
Any other questions on the GJ Speaks or logistics to think through for Tuesday night?
I just sent an email about this, but since we're all on the line, I thought I'd bring it up. I think I may have to recuse on Augustine Blue. And I'm wondering how that's going to work. The applicant is a client of my firm and Larry Beckner, the applicant's father, works at my law firm. While I don't have a pecuniary interest in the outcome of the application, I'm worried about appearance of impropriety. So I was considering whether to recuse on that matter. Especially in this platform, I don't know how the best way to handle that or how we want to do it in this setting.
Yeah.
Great question. I think Jamie is going to say something and I'll add too.
Yeah, we can talk in more detail after if you want to. But if you're comfortable it truly is just an appearance of impropriety, then as usual, that's your call and/or after having explained to the rest of the planning commission, their opportunity to say whether or not they'd like you to step down. And very similar to how we normally would do this, I don't know the Zoom platform myself well. So is there a possibility, can he actually accommodate himself and then come back on after the fact?
Yeah, so you can do that. I was going to say, I know that they've got a waiting room function. I don't know that we've exercised that, but we can explore that. But I would say that it's probably as we would typically, you would leave the Zoom meeting. We would probably need to either call you or message you and let you know when we were, have moved on to the next item on the agenda for you to rejoin.
So, so Zoom actually has a pretty cool feature where you can break up the participants and put them into a separate room. And it's, I just did this the other day because I'm going to have to do this for a board meeting that I have coming up. But you can do breakout rooms and we could just have whoever's running the Zoom webinar pull Andrew out and put him into a separate room so he's not able to hear the discussion and conversation. And then once, once we're done with that, the moderator of the Zoom meeting can just pull him back in.
Yeah. Yeah, so great question. I think we can figure that out between now and Tuesday and then we'll leave it to you, Andrew, on whether you do think you need to recuse yourself or if that's a question with information after the planning commissions to help weigh in on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Christian, I have one, one other brief topic. And maybe, I don't know that we want to get into the finer details, but give you a heads up. So we, and this is a question that came in from Planning Commissioner Scissors, I think, earlier today or late yesterday. So two pieces. One is that as part of. One is that as part of the kind of emergency ordinance and proceedings for the city council, they have passed, and this was actually done in early March, an ordinance that allows the temporary suspension of the requirement to conduct a neighborhood meeting. And as you know, for a variety of projects, especially some of our larger projects, neighborhood meetings are required prior to submittal, considering the governor's stay-at-home orders and other kind of health precautions. We really felt that that was not possible or plausible for some of our applications to continue through the process with that requirement. So the city council extended that to, or the ordinance was extended to the 6th of May, but I know that there has been some concern about what interface the public may have prior to hearing on projects. Do know that we continue to highly recommend that neighborhood meetings be conducted, but in a virtual sense. So I know a number of applicants are figuring out that technology piece, but probably more so the ones that know that they have projects that will attract a fairly significant public audience or neighborhood participation have opted to postpone their hearing, our neighborhood hearings, and at this point are also postponing their submittals. So I think we'll see how it evolves. I think it really depends on the longevity of the pandemic. I do know Commissioner Scissors expressed that perhaps we discuss as a planning commissioner, provide a recommendation to city council on how neighborhood meetings may just not necessarily be required to be held in person, but that the requirement still is imposed that they be held virtually instead. So at this point in time, that ordinance runs through the 6th, but I would, that would be a topic for our discussion at our next workshop and see if you all want to weigh in or provide a recommendation for counties to consider.
Do you want discussion now?
I, I think, considering that the ordinance goes to the 6th, I think, considering the time, I would suggest we put that on the workshop for our next April workshop to plant those seeds and let you guys want to know that that ordinance is in effect today. And then we can talk through if you guys want to consider additional information or information that city council on that change.
So for clarity's sake, the items that we're going to be hearing on Tuesday have all already had public meetings?
They have, yes. Yeah.
George, you're on mute.
Sorry, Tamara, can you put together an April schedule and send it out email? So old guys like me can not miss.
I think.
I know it's a certain time of the week, but if you don't mind, I'm late, lazy. Can you just do that?
That's good. At this point in time, we're actually anticipating our normal schedule for April, which actually will include a second meeting in April, as well as obviously both workshops, one being today and then one being in two weeks. So we will send that out. Do be patient as things evolve, things may change, but happy to get things on your calendar now.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Tim, I don't have any additional information for you today available if there's any other discussion.
Do we have any other discussion or questions before Tuesday's public hearing? Well, I'm sure if you have questions or issues tinkering around with gjspeaks.org, you can just email Bella or Tamara or anybody else on the team and they'll help you walk through that. And, you know, I look forward to hosting us virtually on Tuesday, so.
Thank you, Bella, for your help.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, guys.
Great. Well, thanks so much. I think it went well today and look forward to seeing all your faces on Tuesday on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Right, thanks.
Thanks.